We'll go ahead and call this workshop meeting in the city council to order. And we have an agenda that you've been provided with for tonight's meeting. And at this time, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all is in favor, certified by CNI.
Aye.
All opposed. Also, we have the adoption of minutes, and these are minutes from January 17th, 2023, regular meeting. So we're also consented as we apply.
Are included second consented, I am so moved.
Second. A motion is second, all is in favor, certified by CNI.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. We got a couple of council members missing tonight or out tonight. I know a council member Edwards is at training, leadership training class at the Institute of Government. And Mr. Sosa had a business arrangement he had to take care of, so.
Mayor Phillips, I know normally it's not orthodox for the public to be able to speak at our workshop meetings. But in the audit sitting behind me, we have Lieutenant Colonel James Smiley, who was just appointed by council on the Onzele Civic Affairs Committee. And can he just come up and just say?
In this case, in this case, it's different, yes, absolutely.
Go, boy, cheer up.
Mr. Smiley?
Welcome, welcome to the.
Good evening, sir. Well, I will say my application speaks for itself. I'm looking to work in the community. I've been here off and on throughout my military career. I first got here in 89, left in 95, returned back 2000, stayed to 2006, left, returned back in 2010, and I've been here ever since. I retired here, so just looking to work in the community. And if there's any questions that needs to be asked of me, I'm here, sir.
It's good to have you aboard. And in our Civic Affairs Committee does a lot of great work here as far as, you know, doing things to improve the quality of life here in City Jacksonville and in Onzele County. It's the city county boards, so. But thank you for your interest in being involved in this. It's good to have you aboard.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, so we have some discussion items tonight. And the first item will be number six, and this is a replacement of ladder one truck. And I'll ask Chief Tomlin, yes, he was.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity tonight for us to come sit with you and talk about the potential replacement of our current ladder one. We have a presentation here where we're going to discuss the current status of our ladder one and some of the challenges that we're facing with continued rise in cost in manufacturing and manufacturing times when it comes to these type of apparatus. As you know, with our last apparatus, Engine Three, prior history in the fire department, these apparatus were usually specked out by the fire chief and the maintenance officer. During that process, we actually formed a committee where we got the fire department's input on the type of apparatus they want. With me here tonight, I have Chief Sean Hayes, that was the chair of this committee for the aerial apparatus that contained a diverse group of our fire department members. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Hayes.
Members of council, I appreciate your time this evening. As Chief Thomas said, we're here to talk about ladder one. And I think it's important to begin by just stating why we're here. We try to come before you when we have things that we need, not so much things that we want. And as we get in with the replacement of ladder one, we'll kind of talk about why that is a need, not just for the fire department, but for the for the community. So our mission statement is to provide excellent customer service through prevention, readiness, and response to the threats to the lives and property of the people we serve. And we really feel that ladder one is a key essential component of us being able to fulfill that mission. So its importance is in service delivery. It is a mission critical piece of apparatus. And what I mean by that is there are areas of the city that just can't be reached by any of our other forms of apparatus. Our regular engine companies, the longest ladder that they carry is a 24-foot ground ladder. We're seeing developments for five stories. We have the hospital that exceeds that at seven stories. We're seeing residential townhouse developments that are not just two-story now, but they're three-story going up within the community. And this allows us better reach for those to help rescue any victims that may be there for fire. It helps with our critical, critical technical rescue incidents that we have seen, seen it tick of throughout recent years. So it really is a mission critical piece of apparatus. I'll go over some historical incidents that we've had to where they really would not have had a successful outcome or as successful of an outcome without this piece of equipment. Resiliency and reliability, this apparatus was specked out in 2006 and went into service mid-year 2007. So it's going into its 16th year of service here with the city. It presently has 76,000 miles on it, over 8,000 engine hours. So it's reaching toward the end of its lifespan. Industry recommendations are 15 years frontline, five to 10 years of reserve. But there is some caveats in there about the call volume and things of that nature, the maintenance program. But we're really starting to reach toward the end of its, end of its, its life. And we're aware that we have automatic aid agreements with, with Camp Lejeune. Onzele County only has two platform aerials available throughout the county. And what a platform is, I'm sure you've seen it, is the bucket on the end of the platform. And recent top of the ladder, there's a bucket that the firefighters get into. That assists when we're on long, long-term fires, where we have to be in defensive operations, and we're up there spraying water for hours. It's a safer operation for our men and women. It also provides a safer avenue for doing victim rescues. They have an area of refuge out the window onto a bucket platform as opposed to onto a straight stick ladder, where it may be at an 80-degree angle, 70-degree angle. It's kind of a steep, steep angle for them. But with our automatic aid agencies, we have one platform, and Camp Lejeune has the other. We've talked with Camp Lejeune, they were okay with us sharing this information. But they have some serious challenges with their maintenance program. Their truck, too, is actually older than our ladder one. It's a 2001 model. Last year, it was out of service 50% of the year, so 50% of the year. So if our ladder was out of service and happened to be during their 50% of the year out of service, there was no platforms available in this county. Your next available platforms would be coming from Surf City or Emerald Isle. That's a very extended response time. They let me know as of, as of today, they presently have two of their ladder trucks, because they also have the straight stick ladders, the platforms. Two of those are out of service, and four of their engine companies are out of service right now. So there's some challenges with their, with their maintenance program. And I felt like it was in all transparency to let you folks know that with our automatic aid agreement, while it's there, it's only there for our use if it's in service. So we wanted to share that. Additional ISO credit right now, when we had our last ISO score awarded to us in 2019, we moved up from a three to a two, but we were very soft two. So whereas a two ranges from 80 to 89.99, we were there around the 81 point. So with the reevaluation, we've done some things that will hopefully help us strengthen that score and move closer to a one. But adding a newer ladder truck and then hopefully being able to hold this one in reserve for a few years would give us some extra points in that ISO category to help strengthen that, that score, and make us more of a resilient two as opposed to a soft two. And then we're really trying to move towards strategic apparatus replacement. You'll see here on the next slide in the schedule what that replacement schedule, what we hope to follow and adhere to. Of course, that'll be depending on under guidance and how you want to spend the budgetary funds. But prices are going up, they're just going up more and more and more. When we first started specing this new aerial device, and 18 months ago, it was $1.6 million. Today, it's $1.95 million. And they anticipate a minimum raise of 6% a year. Minimum is what they expect right now, after I talked with the different vendors over the last past week. But here is the strategic apparatus replacement schedule that we've kind of drafted for your review. So ladder one is the next one up for replacement. It's a 2007 model, so going by the industry standard and then also the excess use that it has, we're running just shy of 5,000 calls a year throughout the city. It was due for replacement in 2022, and the current price is $1.95 million. The next apparatus would be Engine One, which is a 2011 model, and that would be slated for replacement in 2026. Presently, the only apparatus that we have that's on our debt service is Engine Three, and it should come off the books in FY '26. So we should carry no debt service on Engine Three as we would hopefully be, be receiving delivery and beginning payment on, on ladder one. And we'll get into why that's going to be such an extended delivery time here in just a few minutes. Does anyone have any questions about the replacement schedule before we? I know those numbers are big and, and they're scary, and they're approximations. That's going by the minimum of 6% increase per year. It could get a little better, but it could get a little worse as well. There's really no way of knowing with, with supply chain issues and just the cost of available materials. So some critical incidents that we've had over the past decade or so is the Roche Brothers Fire, the Longley Supply Fire, Stop &amp; Pond, Sam's Furniture. All those were very large commercial fires that we had to where it's basically what we call defensive operations, not safe to put firefighters inside those buildings due to the building construction and the advanced fire conditions that they were faced when they arrived. Really, the only way to put these fires out is to put large lines on the ground and set up aerial devices and flow thousands and thousands of gallons of water. Basically, a surrounded drought operation is kind of, kind of how we explain it. And then we had the Lowe's High Angle Rescue in the past few years. We had a gentleman that was doing some maintenance work on top of Lowe's. He was doing some welding, and they had a malfunction with the welding equipment, and it blew back on and burned this person significantly. He was in no condition to bring him back down the mounted ladder that was on the building of Lowe's. So we had to do some high-angle rigging, and you'll see that here on the picture on the right. That is going to be the gentleman in the soaks basket that we use ladder one for to remove him safely from the building to a waiting stretcher into the back of an ambulance on the ground. And without this type of apparatus, it would be a lot more difficult and a lot more time-consuming to make that type of rescue. That was ladder one. When it arrived to us in 2007, it was in pretty good shape there. It's seen some wear and tear over the years. We do our very, very best to take care of these trucks because it is a large investment by the citizens and by the city and the council. Our men and women do apparatus checks every day. They wash these apparatus every day to make sure that they're never, they're never dirty. We do weekly checks, more in-depth maintenance on them every single week. And we have a dedicated maintenance officer that supports our, our maintenance program. So we do the very best that we can do to make these apparatus last as long as we possibly can. So you'll notice with this ladder, it's based off the rear of the truck. That was advantageous to us when we specked it in 2006 with the way the city was developed, with the way things are tending to grow together. And our parking lots, if anybody's noticed, are getting a little bit smaller. So it's getting a little bit harder for this long truck to navigate around some of the newer developed parking lots. This truck is 48 feet, 11 inches long. And that's also considering the bucket that hangs off the front of the truck, which adds a little bit more risk when you're making turns and things like that, because you have to account for what would potentially be in front of the driver's seat when you're swinging that truck around. The apparatus that we, I'll go through this first. So right now, ladder one has 76,994 miles, 8,800 engine hours, 1,027 aerial hours. It was out of service for unscheduled maintenance, 2,733 hours in FY '21. In FY '22, it was out of service for 142 unscheduled hours, and we're sitting just over 200 unscheduled hours of downtime in FY '23. And just to tie on a figure that I had not added into this, from FY '21 to today, we have spent just over $40,000 on those maintenance costs on that apparatus for the unexpected unscheduled.
How much was that, Sean?
Forty, $40,000. So what we're proposing is to go with Pierce Manufacturer on their 100-foot aerial platform. Whereas ladder one that we have now is based off the rear of the truck, this aerial is based off the mid of the truck. So the midpoint is where the ladder would come up and extend out. This allows for a shorter wheelbase of the truck. It shaves four feet off the total length of the truck, and there's also no bucket hang whatsoever. The bucket is mounted over the back of the truck. It does not hang over the rear bumper at all, so we would not have to consider that overhang off the back or the front when we're making those turns to make sure that we don't damage any cars, buildings, signs, or anything like that when we're maneuvering throughout the city. It would also give us greater maneuverability as we traverse through traffic in the tighter parking lots. And being a bid mount, it also gives us a greater swath range. And swath range is just the area of reach on the sides of buildings as we approach with it being a bid mount versus, versus a rear mount. So it gives us enhanced maneuverability and operability. Some of the benefits of this vehicle over the 2007 is enhanced safety features. So over the past 16 years, obviously, technology has advanced. These new trucks have, have alarms in them, so if someone doesn't have a seatbelt on, the alarm goes off, so the driver knows not to move forward. They also have alarms and automatic ramp-down features. If someone attempts to take a turn or a curve a little bit too fast, an alarm goes off in the truck, and the engine automatically loses power to bring it down to a safe speed to help them maneuver. This truck is able to kind of pitch and roll to different angles to help us get better above-grade and below-grade angles for different technical rescues. And generally, it's just a lot more maneuverable. From the bedded position to the ground right now, it can do in 30 seconds. So it's, it's very, very fast, and it's a matter of pressing a button. It does that versus people having to operate levers, and there's a lot more safety features to make sure you don't bump into things and hit things as well. It's kind of got its own automatic navigation features to make it just safer for everybody. So here are the opportunity costs. Today, this truck is at $1,950,000. There is an estimated manufacturer time of 30 months, and that's due to the labor force as well as the shortage of available supplies. So if we were to sign this contract today, we would not see this truck arrive at our station for, for 30 months. So it's completely y'all's decision, but any delays that we do delay this purchase, it's just going to be 30 months tacked on to whatever we decide to sign the contract with the manufacturer. Right now, the minimum price increase that they're estimating across the industry is one and a half percent per quarter, so roughly 6% per year. But there are some potential for savings that come along with prepays. Should we elect to totally prepay for the apparatus upfront, it would save us $126,902, so just under $127,000. If we opted just to prepay half a million for the chassis, it would save us $20,000. Or if we opted to prepay half a million for the aerial, it would save us just under $10,000. So it's a lot of money, but there are some options to, to save some money where we can. So there is some upsides to the, to the prices. And I will now turn it over to Chief Tomlin to update on the AFG grant.
And talking about other options, as you know, we applied for the AFG grant last fiscal year. We found out in late December that we were unsuccessful, but the opportunity for the AFG grant has opened up again with bids due Friday, February 10. I've just about completed the, it's almost ready to hit send on this application process. The AFG grant is needs-based on age of apparatus, mileage of apparatus, financial need. There are several criteria that they grade on. Another thing that they look at, too, their priority right now is safety and wellness and the modification of facilities where vehicles come down later on the list, the things that they're looking for applying for this grant. They're looking for these awards to be announced at the end of April, early part of May. If I remember correctly, I think they said the same thing last year, and we didn't find out till September. But these are the goals. As you know, that kind of ties into our fiscal year budgeting. There are some approval contingencies if they start making those awards in April and May, like they predict. If we are awarded the grant and we've already encumbered the ladder truck, then we would actually have to ask for permission to accept the grant. They will not honor the grant if anything is already encumbered. Another contingency of the grant is that you have to spend the funds within two years. As of right now, we're looking at a 30-month construction time. Now, there are opportunities there to ask for waivers on that based on production, vendor times, and stuff like that. So there are opportunities, if we are awarded, to ask for that extension, too, for construction times. But that's all I have on the AFG grant. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
What is, what is the AFG grant? Tell us.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. It's a grant through FEMA, it's assistance to firefighter grant.
What is, what is the local match on these?
It's 50%, so we are actually asking for a million dollars on this grant. That's the max that we can be awarded on this grant, so roughly 50% based on our size and population.
At the denial of the last grant, did they indicate why we did not receive it?
No, ma'am, we did not find out why we were unsuccessful, but I did attend several webinars that they've had over the past few months talking about narrative writing, preparing the grant, and other things that they look for. So I attended everything I could to get every check in the box, to whatever I could do to help to be successful in this grant process.
Mr. Ray, you have any idea where that $500,000 matching funds would come from?
Well, you know, mayor, part of the thought there is, based on the new plan with the county in terms of how they're allocating money back to the cities for fire, theoretically, we would look for the replacement schedule that Deputy Chief Hayes displayed as we would utilize those funds. However, you recall, we've already earmarked a couple of years' worth of those funds now for fire station number four. So one of our challenges is to work through our local delegation to see if they have any additional funds that they can attribute to us this year, and then we could go back and rebalance some of those other funds for the apparatus. The other side is to, back to Chief Tomlin's statement, it just doesn't seem that FEMA is looking at equipment grants at this time as a high priority. Even looking at last year's awards, there aren't many in the overall scheme of things. So I, I can't tell you that I feel very confident that it's going to come through again this year because I've said that for the last 12 years and haven't seen FEMA grants coming into those organizations, mayor. So the other option is, is fund balance reserves, and so that's the only other plan.
Can you put that one slide there again that you had as your replacement schedule? One of the things I was just thinking in my own mind here was, why are the, why are these expenditures not in the capital improvement plan?
Well, some of these items need to be, they definitely need to be programmed in, mayor. One of the things is, we look at, the strategy needs to be clearly defined. As Deputy Chief Hayes has on this, you have a 15-year replacement schedule. You know, at one point, our plan looked at a 20-year replacement schedule. So you'd see that a little farther out. You really just have to determine what that schedule is going to be, and they need to be programmed in based on what that need is.
I would think with, with the mounts that high, I mean, there needs to be some method of, I mean, the schedule's great, but it needs to be some method of figuring out where you're going to get the money to do this.
We would need to start earmarking that annually as part of our CIP.
And like you said, we would be, you know, this money from the county or the fire taxing is a perpetuating, a perpetual thing until.
Till it runs out, till they stop saying we can have it. But I think that's part of our strategy, mayor, based on that relationship with the county.
There's no, there's no doubt there's a need, you know, we, we have to have a truck that can do that because, you know, as the city has grown, we have structures now that do require, you know, that elevation to get to them. So y'all wore that truck out, that 2007 truck out?
We have tried our best. So like I said, they, they wash it every single one, and they take pride in those trucks. They do their best to make them last. It's just, it's starting to show its age.
And also, there are some challenges, too, with obtaining parts. As those trucks age, they quit manufacturing parts like that as well.
So what is that, what is that truck worth? Tell me again.
So now, we're looking at, if it's a private market or in gov deals, we're looking anywhere from 50,000 to 80,000, potentially 90,000 at best. Is that right, Chief? Well, the trade-in is roughly 50, if we did the trade-in. If you remember, kind of like our lease program on our garbage trucks, you sign up for that. So the resale value isn't as good as a Toyota.
To be sure, to be sure, so police, our fire department somewhere needs a ladder truck that they'd be willing to pay a little bit more than that for.
The city of Cary actually just sold one this past year that had 30,000 less miles on it than ladder one, and they sold it for 90,000. And it was in, it run less calls and everything, less wear and tear than what ours.
I pulled up a 2019 yesterday, mayor, and that one sold for about 400,000. But it had, I think the number was about 30,000 miles on it total and very low engine hours. So I got excited.
You mentioned that ladder one was out of service, what, 2,700 hours last year?
Last year.
21, 21.
Last year, it was out of service, and FY '21, 2,733 hours. In '22, it was 142 hours. In '21, that was attributed to it needed a swivel replace, which is what lets the ladder rotate 360 degrees. That was our fourth time replacing that since we've had it. It had a parts cost of $18,000, and it was just difficult finding the part and getting the part here to get, to get fixed. So that's roughly 100 and some days out of service.
Yes, sir.
Well, it sounds like maybe if somebody gave you $90,000 for that truck, it'd be a good time to get rid of it then so that you don't have to keep pumping money to repair, replacement, and repair. Is that correct? Would that be a?
Yes, sir. Another thing, like we said, we wanted to consider, too, was keeping it for ISO credit. They give you credit for reserved apparatus, or reserved aerial apparatus. So when it came time for, or was down for preventative maintenance or unscheduled maintenance, we'd have something to put back into service in those situations.
What is preventative maintenance? How long is it out of service?
Typically, a day or two. You know, typically, when you start digging into that kind of stuff for oil changes, tire replacement, you run into brakes that need to be replaced and stuff like that. They typically find other things. Usually, when he takes it out of service like that, he does everything, so it usually takes a day or two. It just depended.
Chief Tomlin, do, are there a special number of firefighters that have to go through the special training to know how to drive these apparatuses? In other words, does everybody know how to, or it's just a selected few that go through the training process? And how are these individuals selected for this special training?
No, ma'am, there is a training process. We actually have taskbooks that go along with this ladder. We take a new engineer, they spend time on the squads and the engine. When their company officer feels like they're ready, they begin a training program where we actually have taskbooks in place. They give a series of checks that they have to go through to be able to drive this apparatus. Then they have to demonstrate to their captain, the battalion chief, the command staff, that they're fully capable of driving this apparatus. We actually do the same thing with the firefighters as well, because they have a tremendous responsibility, too. It's not just the driver. The firefighters that are, excuse me, the firefighter is expected to help set up this apparatus, to put this aerial in place, and they actually do the firefighting from the bucket. So it's not just the drivers, it's also the firefighters as well that has to receive extensive training.
So is this internal or external training, or a combination of the both?
It's a combination of both. There's actually a state certification that they have for North Carolina aerials that they have to take part in to drive it. And then the firefighters, that's an internal.
And roughly, how much does it cost to train a driver for this?
It's all on shift, all on duty, and then they attend the classes when they're on duty. We allow them time off to take the class, but the rest of the time, they do it on their own time. We do have a person inside the fire department that's certified to teach this class, so we try to schedule these when we can, actually at our fire department, so we can accommodate as many of our personnel as possible.
So if we have a trainer that knows how to do it, instead of sending them someplace to be trained, our in-house person can actually facilitate the training?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mayor, your comment about the capital improvement plan, we have an equipment replacement plan, which is comparable to the capital improvement plan. You know, equipment's on the one plan, facilities are on the other plan. But normally, what we try to do is just have visibility, and we normally do not set aside any additional funds from year to year. We basically try to buy in each year, you know, if we have debt service coming off, we try to basically keep the expense consistent. But when you have large expenses like this, that ends up being a special.
And to me, it would only make sense that you would want to at least accumulate some type of financial resources to pay for these things down the line instead of having a company, you know, I mean, $1.9 million is a lot of money, but I mean, that's.
Yes, sir.
You know, it, you know, when you're, you know, we're working off a tight budget year this year. You know, we, we did pay, we did some major adjustments to the pay plan last year that's.
What the mayor is saying is that I think this surprises us that we're, that we're talking about this. This is not something that we had any, any sort of foreknowledge about, any, any sort of lead-in. It's just boom, here it is, guys, we need a, we need a new truck for $2 million.
Mayor, and that's why we've brought it for the presentation, we wanted to get the discussion out there. This is that step where, knowing that the delivery time, the manufacturer time is 30 months, we need to get that information to the council so that it is on your radar now, so we are looking at it. And we want to bring it back in terms of the bigger play and the dollars. As you're talking to us, mayor, we want to be able to look at that strategy with you. As I said, I don't feel confident with the AFG grant at this point. We could get lucky, but I, I think we need to look at a different strategy. If it's a need for what we have in the community, then we need to strategize. If it's a need for what we have in the community, then we need to strategize what the financing plan's going to be to make it happen.
There's no doubt there's a need. I mean, that's, that's, that's not even an issue.
To me, to me, the relying on the AFG plan, pay for is like buying a lottery ticket.
You'd probably do better by the ticket.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Chief, you might want to buy some.
What, I think I would like to know, you know, how much, where the, where the money's coming from, what our plan is. Obviously, we're talking about debt, you know, what, what sort of rates are out there? How do we go about doing something like that? You know, I don't, I don't think any of us here are against buying the truck. It's just, one, it's out of the blue, two, we were, you know, it's, it's a big expense, and we're, we're not just talking about a tight budget year this year. Next year, we've, we've encumbered a lot of extra dollars just building Fire Station Four. I mean, I, I can't even say that we need to even rely on the 1.3. I think that 1.3 from the county is going to be paying, paying debt service towards the station. So I think we, I think we need some more info on how this is going to be financed and not through a lottery ticket, so.
What is the limit on financing these equipment like this? 10 years, 15?
I think they typically do it for 60 months, five years.
I mean, you could do it longer.
You can?
Yes.
How long?
I'm not sure how long, but I think 10. I don't know beyond that I can find out, though.
But at least five years.
Yes. So, Mr. Ray, this will be part of our conversation when we start our budget schedule, I'm assuming next month. And part of that, can you also inform council, I'll just take a stab at it, maybe the top 15 budgetary items we really need to focus on, whether it's fire, whether the chief needs police cars, whether even some of our own fleet of vehicles are looking at replacements? So we kind of have a heads-up in terms of what it's going to look like for us?
Yes, ma'am. We'll have those prioritized for you based on our discussions at the staff level, and then we'll send it to the council. And we'll, we'll also look at the financing options. That'll be part of the packet that we provide to the council is how do we pay for what we need and what we're going to get? So we'll, all those will be individual sheets that you'll have.
So with our bond rating, does that have any bearing that we can go beyond maybe the five or six typical years when we're talking about financing vehicles? Does that have any play where we can, you know, possibly extend it out to seven or eight years and still get the same type of percentage in terms of what we're paying back? Is that a possibility for us?
Well, we'll pull it together, but typically, yes, with the bond rating, we're in a good situation to be able to maximize not only the rate but the term. And so based on this size of this expense and what we would pay towards it, I think we have some flexibility. The challenge is, even at seven and eight years, 1.9 plus the interest, if the interest right now is, is six plus or minus, maybe even seven because of size, that's still a hefty payment. So we just need to calculate it out and give you hard options so that we're not, we're not just guessing because it's a real, I mean, there's the exact science here. I think Mr. Bittner is spot on. To maximize the link and you're financing half of the useful life of the vehicle based on our plan, and we have the maintenance in it, so that's where we have that challenge of knowing that driving off the lot's going to knock the value down to $100,000 at best. The ROI is on the service to the community. That's not the resale.
That's the important part.
Are those diesel?
Yes, sir.
So the engine's fine, it's just everything else that brings that?
Yes, sir.
And I know, I know y'all look at, you don't roll the ladder on every call, so trying to minimize the impact on the ladder and save it for the, when it's truly needed.
That's correct. Last year, we ran approximately 4,500 calls, and Ladder One responded on 242 of those. So we, we do our very best to minimize that, the impact on that vehicle.
You still keep that at Station Three?
Station One.
That's Station One.
Yes, sir.
And the ladder just, the sophistication about the ladder is it has the aerial ladder to be able to reach up higher stories, correct? Any other significant equipment that, does it provide water? Is it able to take water on it?
Yes, ma'am, it has a pump and a tank, and it has those elevated master streams.
Does it have aerial spray on it?
Yes, ma'am, it has some awesome, yes, sir. And then also, it's a critical component of our technical rescue response, so it has anchor points as well where we can rig off of it.
So Mayor, what you'll see is we'll present this as, to a council, same as we do our legislators, we present this as a white paper. So that would give you the options of the financing so that we look at it and we capture it in the whole, overall. But again, as, as Mr. Wardens saying, the reason we bring it is so that you understand, we don't want to bring it at a later date that has a surprise factor. Plus, the manufacturing time is a big issue for us, and it's not just the increasing cost as we see in all projects that we do, it's the fact that when ordered, when starting, even if they have all the parts, it's still going to take 30 plus or minus months to have it here. You think about that prepayment option, you prepay for any of it, but you still don't see it in town until, you know, a half a term later, right? That's a, that's a challenge, and so that's something that we have to relay back to the community. That's a real issue. And that's probably, a lot of the issues we've seen during COVID on the supply chain, like Deputy Chief Hayes has said, fixing these apparatus, if it's hard enough to fix a front loader or an F-150, you know that when these parts are needed, there's a challenge. And so we know that the downtime is a big issue for us in service delivery, so.
I got a question here. What, do you have any records there showing the downtime throughout the years about what we have?
I researched it back to FY '21, but yes, sir, I could go back further than that. About that, you have the capacity to go back further, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know how, you know, through the years, starting in 2009, when you, I think that's when you deployed it, right?
2007.
That's when you bought it?
That's when we, that's when it went into service.
It went into service in 2007, okay. I mean, if you have those type of records, that'd be interesting to see exactly how much downtime there was, you know?
Yes, sir.
Even as a new truck, which I'm assuming you probably do have downtime with a new truck, don't you?
What sort of warranty do you get with something like that?
It's a one-year bumper-to-bumper one year.
That's ridiculous.
Do you have a right to extend that warranty?
I'm sure we can try to negotiate that.
Yes, ma'am. We looked at one of those warranties on TV that...
Car shield.
You replace, you replace the one pump or part that, that allows you to turn that thing four times.
Four times, yes, sir. Probably called fire shield. We'll see if we can get it.
Yeah. Maybe car shield, fire shield, maybe.
Oh, I know, I had a question, Chief, Chief Nero. Chief Tomlin, what, what percentage do we use Ladder One with rescues in other municipalities for Onslow County that may not have this particular vehicle and they need a Ladder One?
Actually, they did not request Ladder One for any responses last year, so we did not send it into the county.
Have we done it in the past?
It's been over probably 10 years ago.
Okay.
No, we did send it to the base where they had smoke in the Naval Hospital and their aerial was down, so we actually sent it over to assist the base on that call.
How many manufacturers are there similar equipment?
There are, there are several. Part of the challenge is there's an investment group that has bought out several of those, so they're basically owned by the same people, and it's the same parts with just a different sticker on the front of the apparatus.
We'll apply another one.
Pierce has seemed to be the most progressive as far as, Pierce, that's what we showed you, Pierce is the most progressive as far as safety features and moving the industry forward. And they're also involved in the development, manufacture of military vehicles through Oshkosh. So they've got a pretty solid reputation out of, out of Wisconsin.
You said Oshkosh?
Yes, ma'am.
The baby called me.
No, ma'am. Same assembly line.
All right. Anybody else have any questions about our chiefs? While the chiefs here, I just wanted to say that I understand, is your grandmother?
Yes, sir.
Passed away. Express sympathy myself and the mayor and the council.
I certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Bittner.
Always enjoyed when she would come up here, you know, she, she would come in for some of the council meetings, she's been there. I think when you got, I just wanted to ask, Chief, she was here.
Yes, sir, and you know, she always took pride in her yard. She won yard of the month several times, so she was a true solid lady.
Sweet, sweet person. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks for your time. Take care.
Thank you. I think this is going to be a condolence. She was up.
Good job.
Yes. The doors were locked, we had to sit us and try to get in.
Mayor, last week, we sent out the financial, quarterly financial report, and right now, we're not planning on presenting anything. We just give you the opportunity to ask any questions, clarifications on the information that you received.
You don't happen to have a million nines sitting around here?
Bill, I wish I did.
Well, it looks like, just as a comment, the investments or opportunities are much improved.
Yes.
I saw several 4% and 5%, at least three to five anyway, a whole lot better. So we look like we're getting close to a million dollars in, in extra monies this next, next year. So there's part of it, Mayor.
We are excited about the rates are good. Not so great if you need to borrow for a fire truck, but let's get on the investment side.
Yeah, do we, I, I didn't, I don't have my email pulled up, but do, do we still get the waste, commercial waste report on showing how we're doing? Because it looked like, looked like under the, the roll-up that we had in that report, that right now, they, they're losing money because of purchases, I'm sure upfront purchases under commercial waste, but I'm just curious.
Monthly sanitation was...
I will check on that. We've had some turnover, staff turnover, I think that may have been one of the things that...
I don't think we need it on a monthly basis, but if, but as part of that quarterly, I think that would be, be nice just to be able to look at that individually, just to...
We can do that.
This is part of it, thank you. Thank you for, again, for including the investment report. I appreciate that, thank you.
Mayor, not sure if you already commented about it, but on the investment report, you can see the fluctuation that we're seeing now, and this is kind of what we were seeing in the last quarter, what we realized were the older numbers, but you're seeing this as market. So this is some of the work that Eli had been working on to get those numbers to where we want them, and they're better numbers now, but that's because the market is, is shifting one way or the other. It's probably going to continue to shift, but you'll see how those investment numbers have a greater impact now that the rate is above 0.25%. So there's some value there, maybe not as great as we want it, but it's a lot better than what we saw before. So I think that is a good point because it also shows us an economic indicator. The more we're watching those rates, we know how the recession, and we know how the economy's working. There's a direct correlation between the rate that you're getting here and the price of eggs. It's all contagious. It's crazy how that works, but it's there.
You didn't invest in any eggs, did you, anywhere? Might be a good investment, short-term investment.
The highest one now.
Actually, chickens.
Chickens.
Yep. Oh, we passed the ordinance, you could have chickens in the city. I'm just saying, free range. Say no roosters?
And overall, on the finance report, Mayor, just like the comments, we're seeing exactly what we expect right now. We, you know, Mr. Bittner had asked us before to look at the anomalies that are going to be the, the extremes and the outliers. We don't have those outliers now. The numbers are where they, where we've projected them at, where they're going to be, and you'll see it as we get into that FY '24 budget, that these projections are going to carry in where we had planned. So you do have a couple of numbers that are, that are in that red, but again, that just goes to how we plan out projects and larger expenditures. Nothing out of the ordinary for this quarter, and we hope to keep it for the next quarter, that it's nothing out of the ordinary again, because that means that our projections are, are in line with what we want to be.
Mr. Ray, is there any indication that the county commissioners are going to change the distribution of funding this year?
Mayor, council, no, not that I'm aware of. I am meeting with the county manager on Thursday, that's one of the questions to talk to him about, but we, we listed out, we've talked to him to say, if there's an opportunity, we'd love to be at the table with him, we would love to, to push some facts that we have, part of our discussion last week or week before, to share that information with their, with their team is going to be a value add. But I think that's a longer play, just similarly to some of the things that we're doing with the legislature, to try and see if we can convince them that our logic makes sense for all of us involved.
Mr. Massey, what, roughly, how much are we losing back to the county with the changing in the distribution formula? Do you remember?
2.6 million.
We haven't, we haven't done any...
Is that a year, 2.6?
Well, you know, we, at the time that change was made, it was about a $2 million loss. And of course, the amount of sales tax distribution has increased, you know, in the past couple of years. So, you know, only can assume that it's higher than $2 million now.
Our year-to-year budgeting is still feeling the effects of that, you know, so, I mean, but I don't, I don't see, you know, it's like, what's the old analogy, putting toothpaste back in the tube?
Pushing a piece of cooked spaghetti.
When, when this first happened, Gail did a showing how each municipality within, as well as the county, unincorporated areas, actually got per capita. And at the time, North Topsail Beach was getting roughly $10 to every $1 per capita that the City of Jacksonville was getting. Swansboro at the time was getting roughly five to one. I'd be, I'd be interested to know if you're going to be doing some, a meeting with them, if, if that information is still holding true. And that might, that's one of the arguments I've been trying to use whenever I talk about it with one of the commissioners, that it's not, it's not equitable, and it needs, that equity needs to be addressed.
And that's what Dr. Washington mentioned to us last week in our discussion, was the same concept. So just meeting with Sharon and talking to it, we understand that they have, they're going to have their challenges throughout the county, so we're going to work with them. We've had great dialogue with them over the last five, six months. I'm, I'm confident that, the good thing is they're listening to our concerns, so like I say, we just have to capture it to make sure that that value, that we define the value clearly, and we're able to show the math so that as it gets back to the council, to the commission, they can consider it from all angles. We'll present it to them well.
And we have three legislative, no, four legislative members in Raleigh that represents Onslow County. And two, and one was the former mayor, Pro Ten, so I think that we need to lean on our legislators to, to start looking at this conversation.
Well, I think that's been one of the priorities of the league for a while, too, so all that pushes back, you know, how, how we receive the funding like that. But again, like I say, you know, the county, they absorb that, that change in the formula into their budget. So now, you know, the conversations I've had with them in the past, you know, was, we'd love to, but, you know, we don't have the money, period. You know, that's, that's the story I get, which I understand that, because I mean, they dolled that out, you know, with the things they're trying, they're having the support. So I mean, there, I don't know where a good jumping off point would be. I know that, I know that Lionel Midget, who was former commissioner, who actually come up with a formula, got a formula through the legislature that would allow for there to be some, some type of equity there as far as, you know, 50/50, 50, you know, between the per capita and the ad valorem, but out of spite, I think some of the commissioners decided that that wasn't a good thing. I hate to say it like that, but I think, I don't know how else to say it.
Maybe it might be, oh, I'm sorry, maybe it might be time for our legislators to really start thinking about in Raleigh, a new vision in terms of municipality citizens are not double taxed because we're paying both county and city where county is only paying county. And true, we do live in the county, we should not have to pay a duplication of taxes if we're already paying in the municipality. So really, the forward thinking is to figure out how the state of North Carolina could follow other states like Virginia, like... like Florida, where you can't double tax citizens on certain things, to make it a little bit more equitable. And then again, too, we have legislators in Raleigh from Onslow County who is at the forefront to be able to push this type of theory and philosophy forward.
Now, one of the problems you have with that whole thing, which I, I agree with you on that. And, you know, like Virginia and Maryland are two states that their laws do, you know, keep from having to pay double taxation, taxation. But you've got to remember, they have city school systems, county school systems. And, and, you know, the cities still have to provide certain services. So it's, you know, it's just.
Just certain things we can look at.
It's kind of a shell game, you know, that you're. It would take, it would take an action by the whole state, General Assembly to change that. But, and I don't, I do not foresee that ever happening, not in North Carolina.
We're concerned if things happen in politics, so it, it may.
It may be nice, but it's not going to happen.
All the larger cities throughout the state is having the same issue there, most of them, right?
Correct.
So somehow, we need to start working with those larger cities to bring this conversation forward.
Yeah, it's like we're, we're, Dr. Washington's talking about, other states have different formulas. And so even if it's not a hundred percent taxation by the county and a city and a district, you can have a percentage. And then, back to the mayor's point, then you have different services that you're providing. So I think with, I think with our legislative team and with the league, you know, through the metro mayors, you know, some of this dialogue of, that's a, that's a good group to carry some information back and forth to our legislators. I think there's some value there to create that dialogue. What we have to do is look at what's the formula that works best. So if we can have some success working with the county as our partner and present it together, I think we have more value then, because then it's two partners together, city and county, developing a plan, as the mayor said, that can work for all of us to provide the services that our people need. Then we get some, we give Senator Lozara some, some credibility when he presents this back to.
I do want to, I, I do want to go back over again. I, you know, when I, I mentioned that about it being done out of spite, that was not any of the commission, not the commission, present commission. They're actually the ones that are hung with the actions that took place back in two thousand and thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thirteen. That some other commissioners who are no longer there did. But now are saddled with, with the dilemma of what to do about it, so.
At that time, there was no commissioner that was actually from the city of Jacksonville, right?
Right.
And see, the other thing, Surf City, North Topsail Beach, Swansboro, and Sneeze Ferry have really made out because those homes are near the water. So when you're talking about, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred, a million plus homes, that now that distribution is based one hundred percent on ad valorem or your property taxes, Jacksonville, you know, the average home, you're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand compared to a million.
And a lot of those owners, they're probably not even in the state.
Or not even residents.
Right, right.
Citizens of the state, yeah. A lot of that's rental property. Any other good news there, Sabrina?
Are you going to cut our food budget? Just focus on the investment.
Now, this, this, the investments are out of all funds.
I think the fund is listed on there, the, over to the right, maybe. It's very, it's a very small, very small numbers.
Oh, okay. It is.
Thank you.
So we have a FY twenty-two fourth quarter HR council report summary?
Yes, so Kimberly's going to give us a presentation and Tom. So we, we have a quarter report, and then we want to also use this similar to what Sabrina was talking about, that'll lead us into our plan for our budget process for FY twenty-four. So that's where we're at with this presentation and to carry on with the concept of keeping it in front of council so that we give you the information and it stays prevalent and it doesn't surprise you at some point.
I'm almost afraid to follow Sabrina's presentation. We had some great news tonight, one point nine million for a truck, and then, of course, the ad valarium discussion. What I'd like to talk to you about is the great job that your employees are doing for you. So we've got about six hundred plus employees that you have done so much for, and they're very grateful for moving us forward in our compensation. And I just wanted to give you an update. You had asked for an update on compensation prior to going into the budget session. So we want to tell you where we are as a result of what council decided to do last year. So Mayor, Council, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on employee compensation. As you know, in two thousand and twenty-two, the council formally adopted a strategy for compensation. And I just wanted to go over what that compensation strategy was, what you did to get closer to that strategy and kind of where we sit right now. So we chose one, we, we adopted a strategy that would utilize North Carolina League of Municipalities as our peer cohort. And those were, that market was twenty-four thousand citizens to ninety-nine thousand citizens. We typically sit at the top of that, we're one of the larger. And we voted and agreed that that would be our market moving forward. And then the second thing we decided was we needed to target. Do we want to be at the bottom quartile, top quartile, or do we want to target at the middle, right at the average of that market? We knew we had some room, so we chose our target, target to be the average of our peer cohort. Then we also wanted to provide for salary and scale adjustments based on the market and economic conditions. And we also wanted to provide pay adjustments that recognized individuals' performance, but also their experience in education and certifications. So that was our adopted strategy. Wanted to just give you a little background. The reason we had come in and we hadn't, this had not been brought to council on a regular basis, and we wanted it to. We made a huge move in adopting a strategy, but we knew we were lagging our market. So we wanted to go out and assess the market and find out exactly where we were lagging the market, so that we could come back and talk to you about what we needed to do to move. We knew we had high turnover, we brought you some of those numbers. We knew we had difficulty recruiting, that's what brought it to, really to the forefront. As you recall, we talked about interviews. People were scheduling interviews and then not showing up. Or worse yet, interviewing, a lot of time and energy, and then not showing up for the first day of work. We had about seventy open positions at that time. We also looked at the reasons people were leaving, and we looked at the exit data, and the compensation was the top reason for people leaving. So the council wanted to take action, and we want to thank you for the action that you took. If you remember, that you approved a six percent salary increase that was approved in June of two thousand and twenty-two. Now, remember, we were showing you two thousand and twenty-one data against our peer cohort. We knew the cohort was going to move, but we were trying to get there, we knew it was a big leap. So we also, at that time, in June, beyond the six percent, we increased step pay and, and compensation for telecommunications. We also approved, later in that year, we approved a two point two million additional employee wage adjustment. That was in October, we implemented that in October of two thousand and twenty-two. Again, we had the two thousand and twenty-one data, we were working against it. So we, we, you all did an exceptional job funding a big leap when we came back with all, you remember the complete analysis we came back with. We took you through that whole educational opportunity. So we were trying to get closer to our adopted strategy, which was the average of that market. Of course, it was with two thousand and twenty-one data. We also wanted to increase our starting salaries. If you remember, the recruitment was an issue, and we wanted to up that starting wage. So we, of course, did that, and I wanted to report the results. So as a result of you adopting that strategy, targeting that average compensation and funding to move toward that, I wanted you to know that we improved our external competitiveness. As a matter of fact, we moved within one percent of the data. Now, that was the data we had at the time. So yay, that's great news. We also were able to reduce employee turnover. We were able to eliminate the pay compression. We brought that to you and showed you what that looked like, and we wanted to make some moves with our compression. We were able to improve employee equity, where there was some inequity, internal inequities. And also, we were able to impact the compensation as one of the reasons for leaving. So where are we now? So we are now, we get our data from the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and that data has been analyzed through that entire process we showed you that we do. And our two, our two thousand and twenty-two salary survey shows that the market did move. They did. And they increased on average five percent. I'll be honest with you, that's much lower than we thought. We thought that move was going to be seven to twelve percent, if you remember the conversation. That's good news. Also, ninety-five percent of the survey respondents implemented COLA and merit increase. So I want you to think about the previous slide. Remember when I said we were within one percent of the market for that two thousand and twenty-one data, right? We almost got there if they wouldn't have moved at all, but they moved five percent. So in reality, right now, currently, we're lagging market six percent. So if your adopted strategy is, and it is, we identified the market, we're targeting the average, we're lagging, in order to meet your strategy, about six percent, which is much better than where we sat this time last year. So I want to thank you for everything that you did. I know the employees have come into our office regularly to thank us for the work that we did against this. So my hope is that we'll continue to be able to update you. Every, twice a year, we give you the quarterly HR reports, but come back and talk about compensation prior to the budget process. And then after we make moves, tell you how we did, similar to this.
Yeah, this, the, the good play here, Mayor, is so that this does the exact same thing, that it gives us the lead-in and to know that our, that our market and the work that the council has completed is lagging six percent. So you know that's our, that's our concept number as we're going into FY twenty-four. It goes back to some of the comments that Mr. Warden said during this review process, when the council was talking about how you're going to capture this and what we've got to do to stay ahead of being in the same place and having the information. We know that's our target, and so we're going to look at what that market drives us, where the market drives us to be, and then what we have to do to make, to make the numbers work. Same for, for our cohorts, same challenges that they're seeing. And so it's good to have Kimberly's team reviewing how the market moves and how that impacts us, not only as an average, but per position. So those are things that we're looking at, is, is how that's going to impact our positions individually as well. So there's a, there's a lot of eyes that we put on it, but hopefully, the information with the quarterly report in this update gives you something as we're leading into that process.
I'd rather have bad news sooner rather than later. You know, I despise bad news at the end, or, you know, when it's late. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely, and, and, and we see this as good news, because honestly, we didn't think we'd get this close. So, great job.
Ms. Williams, you talked about the recruitment difficulties that you and your department were having. What are the shifts that's causing these difficulties in, in your professional opinion?
What are the shifts that are causing them?
The recruitment difficulty, why are we having such a difficult time recruiting individuals?
We were. When we came here, in, in early on, we were about seventy positions open, and we're only seventeen positions open now. So now.
That's across the board?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
I know, and.
Wow, that's.
What, what happened, yeah. Okay, so what happened was the good things that we have saw a decrease from seventy positions to now seventeen? So what was the good thing that came, that shifted that, because that's a big shift?
It's a huge shift. And I think what happened is we were seeing the trend, and you remember, I even remember, Chief Tolan was talking about when we were losing firefighters. Then after you had voted to have an adopted strategy and fund it, we actually had people called to see if they could come back. So it was moving the compensation. That, I think, was one of the biggest impacts we've had in the ten years that I've been here in order to attract people and keep them. We raised the starting rate, and we took that, if you look at the six percent that, that you elected to give in, in the July timeframe, and then in October, the two point two million to adjust some of those inequities, right? That's almost four million into employee salaries. So that's been huge as far as attracting and retaining staff. Only seventeen positions open right now, that's.
So we rehired individuals that left. We rehired them to come back.
And we've had that in other departments as well, where individuals have left, been gone for six to seven months and just came back in. We have examples of those, and that's a good success story. It creates a challenge for us to really understand all the issues, and that's the next level of, the, the compensation is, is a really good policy thing for council to think about, because you have to think about it all the time. The other side of that is, what do we do as an organization to value and appreciate our employees and to train them and to keep things moving forward in the right direction? So that mix, there's a lot of things that we need to do to get better. This is a ground level that gives us the opportunity to keep people long enough to be able to work with them. And I think that's a critical fact that we need to focus on, is without that, we would lose them before we can make them part of an effective team.
I think that's a significant move there, I mean, step, it's huge.
I went to an event out at Topsail, and two of the police that were there were from Jacksonville, and they said they really wanted to come back.
Give them my number. So, or give me their name and I'll go find them.
So when those individuals come back into the city, they don't come back at the salary they left? They're now automatically, your salary is increased by six percent when they come back?
Well, it depends on their qualifications. You know, that's, you know, we talked about the equity to have people pay the amount that's appropriate for their grade and their qualifications. So when we have a new hire, we go through a review of what's their experience and what are the salaries that people in that same job with similar experience are getting. And we set their salary accordingly.
That's just like if somebody would come from anywhere.
Oh, no, I wasn't talking about anyone, I was talking about former employees that left us. And then, if they were making thirty thousand as a police officer and they come back, would they come back at that thirty thousand because they still have that?
What, what I meant was, if anybody came back with those qualifications, or came here with those qualifications, no matter where they came from, they would actually be at that level, too, correct?
We, we made sure now that there's some flexibility in, in that hiring range, so yes, and it depends. But in answer to your question, Dr. Washington, we do bring people back. Depending on how long they've been gone, we bridge service, so it would depend. It would depend, and also, what experience or education they gained while they were gone.
But I think, you know, the bridge service has to do with, you know, whether you have a break-in service, how much.
How long you're gone.
Your vacation time, things like that, you know, for former employees. You, you have discussions with some of the other aspects of compensation and that. But generally speaking, you know, we look at employee wherever they're, a new employee, an employee that used to work for us coming back, we look at their qualifications and place them appropriately, you know, in the pay scale.
Now, since October, when we implemented this new pay scale, from October into now, what percentage of former city employees have now returned back and have been hired?
I don't, I don't know that information.
Can you get that number for us?
I sure can.
Can you also disaggregate the data to look at entry level versus mid-management and senior level positions?
If we can get it, it's not going to be a large number, so you'll see that, there won't even be a, a lot of division. You know, I'm thinking of three people right now in that timeframe, and, and I'm thinking you're going to have a handful of people, so it won't, it will not be too complex to provide the information.
Sure.
Any of those returns are success stories.
Even one is a success story, given the dilemma we were in when we started this conversation.
Goes back to what Mr. Jackson's saying, when you talk to somebody at another place, the value there is someone saying, I would like to return to the organization. It doesn't matter if it's pay, it doesn't matter if it's culture, it matters that there's something that makes them want to be a part of this team. And I think that's the overall concept. We'll get you that information as well.
Part of it, part of maybe where they went, they thought the grass was greener, and it may not be greener over there, too, so.
And it's a big part of, part of that dialogue.
What the opportunities really are. If you go someplace like that, you don't have some of the same opportunities that we have here. Opportunities for advancement and things like that.
And if you remember, when we came to you, it's a pretty devastating discussion. And it's because the assessments we were doing were not being shared. And we hadn't moved and, and kept up with market for many, many years. And so having this adopted strategy and having us report to you on where we are against it once, twice a year, you know, first before budget and then after, if it's made an impact, I think is ultimately. I think is ultimately important, so we never go back. I think that's, that's the point, is we just can't go back. We, you know, we took a lot to catch up. If you look at how we had, you had to fund that.
I think about when we were talking about recruitment, and I asked the question about difficulties, when Mr. Hanson was having difficulty securing engineer for his department, and I'm going to give you a kudos tonight for North Carolina State. North Carolina State has an engineering department as well as North Carolina A&amp;T. So I was wondering, when it comes to recruitment, are we reaching out to the colleges? Are we holding job fairs at these particular colleges? If we already know they have a certain skill set, why are we not at these universities recruiting these young men and women to the city of Jacksonville for a skill set in which we desperately need? Because I believe that in the engineering's positions were vacant over a year. And I just think about those graduates that have the skill sets that could have already been hired within the city and working.
So we do, we do. So we do do college, and we do a lot of the HBCU colleges as well. Because, and one of the things we're looking at right now is targeting the GIS system. I know there's been a lot of conversation about this, how we can target certain skill sets in different areas and targeting areas as well. We've been working with our IT team. Yeah, it's a new concept. It's pretty cool.
The GIS system?
That you could, you could target regions that have, what's that?
The E-S-E-C-R-I, yes. We've been with that with the National League of Cities for, since we've been a member. So that's been over 20 years.
Target by region. Well, we're hopefully we're catching up. So let's see. But we do target colleges and universities as well. Engineering is, is a hotspot right now in general. We're getting a lot of email traffic from all of the different counties and cities, many of them across the state and other states, that are looking at, or in deep need. Hey, we're trying to target engineers. Does anyone have any? Does anyone have anyone we can look at? You mentioned North Carolina A&amp;T. As a matter of fact, I don't know if you're aware, that several years ago, we identified a young person. Yes, a young person that had graduated, and he was born and raised in this area and wanted to come back. Of course, he's gone on and he's flying, I think Blackhawks with the Guard.
Apaches.
Apaches, okay, my bad. But really cool helicopters or airplanes. And continually, you know, he's still employed with us, but on leave, and will come back because we want to invest in someone that's born here, raised here, went to one of our schools and wants to come back. Engineers are hard to find. So we do look, we work, we work with different organizations that reach out to engineers. Any of those technical positions that are tough are tough for everybody. So any suggestions? We're open to them. I think we do target those schools, and I know that Wally has a great relationship with them. Mr. Hanson.
And one of the things in the quarterly update, you know, if you notice that because we're now doing our exit surveys, you know, online, we get more response, so we're getting more information with regard to why people are leaving and that. And so we'll continue to look at it as to what can we do to basically keep people from leaving and retain, you know, their employees.
The average tenure for a position in this country is 2.5 years. That's kind of scary if you think about it. So if, if you, because we talk, for example, about military spouses, and a lot of people, not us, certainly we support hiring any military affiliated members. But spouses are sometimes not looked at as a good source for employment because they only stay three years. And my argument is 2.5 years is the, the national average. So we're, you know, we are fortunate that we're only at 17 open positions. We are tracking all the reasons people are leaving. We have gone to an electric for, an electronic format for exits and also offering interviews, not just surveys. So we're trying to drill down. So I think we're moving in the right direction. We're working on some leadership training. And I think, you know, I think the beginning point was let's be fair with compensation, and then let's dive into culture and training and development of our leadership. And let's see how we can impact retention as a result of those things. So that, that's where we are right now with Mr. Ray, looking at how we do a better job with that.
And Kimberly's team right now, Mayor, looking back at recruitment, is updating the overall recruitment strategy, kind of how we talked about. And we're tying in the departments to try and look at how we can be more aggressive in recruiting. And then the second thing, we had a team of 12 on a call today looking at a fellows program. So you'd look at all the great schools within the, within the state of North Carolina, and we would bring that talent in. That's one of the things that Mr. Hanson's focused on, is if you can bring in some interns to teach and educate and make those people strengthen our team, especially these engineer minds that we have across the state, that'll give us a value add and will maximize our dollars here within the community. So I think what they're working on now as a strategy shift is, is pretty effective. And I think you're going to see the fruits of, of that product very soon, hopefully.
Have we ever considered maybe just hiring a market analysis just to give us some strategies on how to recruit, retain, market our services? Because when you look at eastern North Carolina, we are a different beast as opposed to west of I-40. So with that being said, when we tend the legislators meetings in Kinston, we, we just talked about, it's, it's just a different mindset because we're west of I-40. The structure of life is just a little bit different than you would expect in the research triangle area. So have we considered a line item to bring in a market analysis to help us to strategize forward thinking about recruiting those individuals? Whether we're looking at colleges, whether we're looking at outstate, possibly individuals coming in from out of the country? I, you know, one thing that immediately comes to mind, I'm not saying that Chief Unaro needs to hire police officers, but, you know, when we're really talking about having shortages, I immediately think about Puerto Rico, that is United States territory, you know? What would happen if we gave him some money to go to Puerto Rico to recruit?
He would spend it.
On the recruitment, absolutely. But, but I'm, but I'm just saying, and I know things cost money, and I know we, we have to look at our budget, but Jacksonville is a very great city, and it's a very great city on many different levels. But in being a great city, you still have to put forward thinking, moving forward, because the world is not going to stop just because we live in eastern North Carolina. Things are going to be changing. And if we could propel ourselves 15 years into the future, what would this city look like because this council was committed for forward thinking that this could be an integrated city just as challenging as some of your municipalities that you see west of I-40?
I think you've seen a lot of your, your efforts be realized, and it's, it's very good from the council, the previous teams working on this. You think about, you had a one-person quasi-part-time HR specialist. Now you have James Trittwell as a, as an acquisition and talent specialist. That's kind of goes with what you were talking about. What we saw in Kinston at our COG discussion is, a lot of the small towns, they definitely don't have a talent acquisition specialist that does this 24 hours a day. What, what they do is they focus on the league, the National League, and the COGS to help them with that, that kind of concept. We have the value of having a person here every day to work on those strategies, and he has those connections, just like Tom, when he's looking at the market analysis, they pull in those external teams to help them as, because they are program specialists. Same thing for Tom, for, for James. James pulls in those strategies at a national level for how that recruitment. That's part of what we're saying now and how we're changing our recruitment strategy as an organization. I hope you see more of the, of that positive product very soon. But I know you'll see it over time, just like you saw the growth from, from half a person to, to a team doing that. I think you're hitting the nail on the head. It has to happen now, or else we're not going to see it in one, three, five, seven years.
Are you also going to implement, Mr. Ray, some of the strategies that you've implemented in your former cities to help move that needle forward?
We're on that right now, yes, ma'am. Yeah, we're on that now, and that's, I think that's the beauty. The one thing in the other places that, that I've worked in that we have here that's so much better in North Carolina is a talent base. We not, may not have a direct manufacturing base to give someone 400 future workers to work at a certain level, but we do have a professional level base here because we have the best college system and the best junior college and community college system. It doesn't compare. So that gives us a reach from western Carolina to whatever the eastern water is. Probably coastal or ECU or something. But anyway, in between, we have so much talent there. And I think that's what you'll see for us, is being able to pull that talent. And then the secondary part, which we already do a great job, is utilizing our Marines to give us something that no one else gets to have, right? Fayetteville gets to use it and some other places. But we have multiple aspects here that give us a very good talented workforce. So I'm excited about the fellows program because it's going to give us access to these younger graduates to bring, to bring them into our team. And, and they're already coming out with some form of degree, so I think they'll have a, they'll have something to give us. They just won't have the experience, but that's what we're going to give them.
What thoughts have been put forth dealing with quality of life? Because when you, I was, went through a workshop dealing with the diversity of ages now and how each five, we got five different-
Yes.
Groups in the workforce now. And when you start dealing with the younger groups-
What's motivating them?
Right, exactly.
So that's a great question. What Mr. Ray was referring to when we talked about strategy is, we put all the directors and, into a room, and we've had two meetings now. We're finalizing a third, which is what's going well with recruitment and retention, what is not going well and you want done differently? And then what are the barriers that we can remove? And in that discussion, we had a lot of thought about what is it that the different generations value? So just as an example, should we look at community hours? There are certain groups that want nothing more than, you know, it's not necessarily, you know, eight to five Monday through Friday. We want to know that we can get, you know, two or three days a year that are paid for by the city as work time, where we can go out and do a service project in the community. So that was something that was brought up. I'm giving you one example, we probably could give you 50 because it would, it's been two really good meetings. And also about re-renovating our policy and procedures on how we recruit. Are the panels the right way to go? Are the, is the structure, is it taking too long? Because one of the things we're finding when we talk about recruitment and bringing people on board is you have to move fast. And if you do not move fast, they, they go somewhere else. So we've really expedited our process as much as possible within our policy. Do we need to now maybe adjust our policy so that we can move rather fast? So we are looking at that. And we're looking at how we can make the experience for employees more inviting and some of the policies and procedures that might be. And so you might be seeing some things coming to you because we're going to be shifting things. And some of those things that might be a barrier, how do we remove those barriers? So quality of life is a big issue. And what are some of the alternate, alternative ways to look at work? And I don't mean just work from home, which is the first thing that pops up in everyone's mind because obviously that's not the case with some, with firefighters or police, and half of our workforce can't do that. So what are some of those other possibilities? And that's what we're looking at.
Like schedules, 10 night, 10-hour workday, short a week, and stuff like that.
Yeah, so a lot of that has been brought to us. We've done two work sessions with all of the, the directors and, and really great feedback. So our third session is coming up, and we're going to do a first draft of what the policy changes might look like.
I know one time, Mrs. Williams, we had like a, an outside group of stakeholders in the city of Jacksonville that was part of the hiring process within our cities. And it was great that you mentioned this, that the directors are having these intense conversations about what's working well, what barriers we need to, to tear down. Because currently, I think we have 13 directors, department directors, roughly 12 or 13.
12 or 15, I think.
Out of those 12 and 13, only two are people of color. So that makes me think about if we're having an interview that's going on, certainly these two directors cannot always be in the room at the same time because otherwise they're just coming to work to do an interview. So how are we balancing that when a person walk in the room? One person might walk in the room and everyone looks like that person who's interviewing. Whereas someone else that walk in the room, they may only see one or two or possibly no individuals that identifies with them. So how?
Okay.
You're not pulling out the handcuffs, you're fine. So how are we balancing that? So because what I would not want any potential employee to feel that I walked in the room and no one looked like me on the interview team. So do I shut down in my mind that this is just going to be a dog and pony show to get through this because is this organization going to be welcoming of me? Or, because you can look at it in so many different ways. I just would not want the proof of only two individuals of color to feel that pressure on them that if we needed to, hire outside individuals to help balance that interview? So anyone that walks in the room can see one or two people that look like them, but one or two people are also representative? So there's not a higher increase of one particular group versus a decrease in others?
So, great point. We, in our current practice, we have, we have three different panels, and it depends on your position. Every position is identified as to what level it's beginner, intermediate, or advanced. Beginner's three-person. So if we're hiring maybe a, and I'll just give an example, a maintenance worker or a sanitation crew worker, that's three-person panel. We, and then if we go up a level, it's a five-person panel. And then what you're talking about is directors would be at the seven-person panel. And that's only for very high-level positions. So we don't wear out our two directors that you're referring to. But we do take into consideration at every single interview that we have someone of color. So, and we, we have that representation in human resources. And we make sure that human resources is at every interview in this entire city. Every interview, from a sanitation worker to this, well, I even say city manager, but we weren't on that interview, but you know what I'm saying, all the way up. And we make sure that we have someone Hispanic if we can, someone of color if we can, veteran status. And we do that with every single interview panel. And we've moved that direction in the last three to five years. So we do a really good job with that. I think, I think that when we look at changing or revamping what our processes and procedures look like, that's one component we don't want to lose because we want to make sure that our panels are representative of the entire city. So, and I really do think we do a good job with that. I think if we do, any kind of stay interviews in the near future, we'll ask that because we've moved a long way with that. I mean, there's, there's someone of color at every interview.
And our, our biggest challenge on, on our diversity right now is from our Hispanic community.
Yes.
And we look at our numbers that if the community is 18 to 20%, and as a city team, we're representing, what's the number, 3 to 5% maybe? So we're real low. And so the good thing is, our HR is, is, is very diverse. Six members in HR, two, maybe I just leave out. Maybe I just have bad math. But two males, five females, one Hispanic, two African-American, a couple Marines. I mean, there's a lot of good talent in the HR that we utilize, so.
I'm not sure about the Marines, but everybody else.
You hired them, so. But anyway, I'd say that because that's a good represented department. You don't see that diversity in other departments. And so we've got to look at that as our recruitment mechanism for, for how we're effective. I think that's, you, you're another good spot on point for, we've got to review how we're doing things to make sure that we're reaching out. And some of those are going to be challenges still. And you said it, you look around our department director table, we have, again, we have some people that, we have male and female, and I was trying to do the math in my head, but it's, it's out there. But it's, it's a well-represented group, and we just have to keep growing. So you see it now and next year and the year thereafter. We want to keep making gains on how we're, how we're, how we're growing as a team.
Chief, you know, do you still use an independent group when you're interviewing for your police officers? How are your police officers now selected?
We, we do the same, then it goes through the city process.
Internal.
Internal.
So you don't have, what was the reason why that internal group was no longer used?
We follow the policy, the city's policy. When the city policy changed, we used to use outside assessors to do that. Give us the opportunity to get folks from the community. When the policy changed, that required us to use city, city employees to do that. And we've been doing that for several years. But with, with having a larger department, though, we have that opportunity to, to, to be very diverse on those panels.
See, and the, the participation in the panels by representatives from different departments is very beneficial for those individuals. You know, there's been numerous individuals that had never participated, you know, on some of these panels for selecting employees. And it's a developmental thing for them. It helps them learn the process and the proper way to go about it and that. So it, it's got multiple benefits by having the internal panels. Of course, police still uses some external assessors, you know, on some things, evaluation.
No, we don't use external assessors. We do, we do some testing.
Yes.
Some like written testing and things like that, but all the panels are city employees.
But the point is, you, you, you measure certain things that are important for police in addition to us having our panel.
And, and, and part of our discussion, part of our input would be that we would like to bring community folks back, back in to, to talk to these candidates and get their perspective of those candidates.
Just, you know, the quality of life thing, one of the big things, quality, it's not just for employees. It's for everybody in our community. And what we're doing with the master planning on the recreation land is a big effort for quality of life.
Yeah, you're going to see some, some new, a joint effort between Kimberly's team and Lisa's team, where we're working on some new videos that focus first on why live in Jacksonville, which is part of that quality of life. And it's a fun, interesting thing for us to do. Then we're going to morph it into other activities that we do and the recruitment efforts. But you're going to be able to see that again because we have that talent internally. And that's just a blessing that you've got between these two, that, that they have that ability to, to produce something that's going to be pretty exciting. So if you have a cameo, just be ready to say why. Why Jacksonville? That's our question.
Mr. Bittner, those speedos, timing for the spring.
That's the cameo.
Thank you. That was a very encouraging report. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm going to do a good job of backing her up.
My bodyguard.
Why don't you patch her up a bit?
Mayor and Council, thank you. Lisa and I both appreciate your time to actually talk about one of the very programs that we believe shows community and life of our students, and that is the institutes. So the city of Jacksonville created the Sturgeon City Institutes for youth in order to provide a place of pride, pride in themselves, a place to learn leadership, leadership in their schools and their community, as well as civic and environmental awareness. Everyone knows how much the New River means to me. I love to be able to pass that on to our students. It's very important. Our very first institute was in 1999. Yes, I was here, longevity. 1999, and we have held these institutes consecutively every summer since then. So for 23 years, the institutes have run and we've reached over 3,000 students of our youth. This is year 24. In the past, we have offered a variety of institutes. The very first institute is the science. That is graduating eighth graders or incoming freshmen. We try to teach them hands-on science in the very environment that the city is responsible for cleaning up. It is something to be very proud of. All the other institutes are available to freshmen through seniors. And that is the advanced marine biology, engineering, art, media, public safety, and of course, leadership and youth mapping. So what are some of the results of 23 years worth of institutes? Well, first and foremost is the relationship between the city of Jacksonville and Sturgeon City. We have formed a collaborative partnership between the two. The city of Jacksonville's stormwater permit, two of our minimum control measures is public education and public outreach. That is a requirement of the city's stormwater permit. We actually obtain ours from Sturgeon City every year. In turn, the stormwater water quality staff actually provides educational programs for the Sturgeon City instrument programs as well. So it's a give and take between the two. Another thing is we actually provide a safe haven for our students to go and learn, interact with peers of other schools and have fun. Another is, we actually provide a pool from which we can fill the youth council with students that want to become young leaders and take leadership roles in their high schools as well as interact with you as council. They want a voice in our community and our youth council gives them that voice. Some testimonies is we've had numerous students out of those 3,000 that have gone on to very important roles. For instance, Brian Kelly, who's are now our fire marshal, started in our institutes. Meredith Morgan, which was the very first kid that I ever had in middle school. She's actually the science director for the science museum in Raleigh. And then we have a police officer that went through the young explorers as well as the institutes. So there's a give and take of, we want our students to stay in Jacksonville and continue to fill our shoes when we leave.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll take it as we're moving forward. We're looking at moving Sturgeon City Institutes over back to the city. As Pat said, it's been a collaborative effort for years. The city has been an integral part of, of running the institutes and the overall operation. During COVID, for a few years, the financial operation or just management of registering students and bringing students in was moved over to Sturgeon City Institutes. But because of some of the issues that Sturgeon City is having with their logistics and where they're moving in the direction that they're moving, we are proposing moving the, the institutes back to the city under our operation. We have, and just understand that we have never stopped being a part of the institutes. And, and as Pat said, she's been there for 23 years. I've been a part of the institute since I've been here in 2010. And so has many of our staff. Tracy Jackson is here tonight and she has helped out in many, many ways as well as with that, that partnership with the youth council and some of our community outreach. But we're looking at moving the institutes for the operation back to the city. But it will remain as far as the institutes are concerned, they will still happen at Sturgeon City. One of the ways that we're looking at moving them over to the city is getting it a new name. New River Institutes. Pat actually came up with that name. So I think that's very near and dear to your heart, right?
Correct.
We want to continue to build on that city and Sturgeon City's historic synergy and that partnership that we have. We want to make sure that we instill in our students and continue to do so, that, that civic pride, that, that they need to look at ways to sustain our, our community and, and to move forward in a positive direction. So we put together a freshened version of the vision statement from, from Sturgeon City Institutes to New River Institutes. We want to empower, continue to power our young people, give them a platform where they can learn so that they can go back into our community and take positive action for change to make our place, our, our city a better place to live. We want to continue those partnerships, not just with Sturgeon City, but with the Arts Council. Our Arts, Arts Institute has for several years now been held at the Jacksonville Onslow Arts Council, right across the street from City Hall. We, and they have offered again this year that place for us as well as, as some of their equipment and, and some of their art supplies as well to help the students learn there. And Noah, who is in charge of the Arts Council, has also, is helping to identify some of the teachers that might, might help with the students there. City departments, it's not just the three departments that I already discussed, but we're looking at ways that Recreation is going to step up and help with us as well as the transportation to help move students to their different locations and their different activities. And I think there might be a couple of other departments that aren't, aren't coming into my head at this moment, but, so we'll look at ways that the city can help out with their existing resources to help move, move New River Institutes forward. The area schools, we have dipped into a pool of, of teachers that come back every year. We're looking to bring some of those teachers back to help with the institutes as well as with our youth programs, which Pat mentioned before. And, and Camp Lejeune, we reach out and, and make available the institutes to students there. And then some years we have also gone on base to do learning down at Onslow Beach in that area as well. For 2023, our thought is that we would have the institutes June 26th through the 30th. Traditionally, it's a little bit earlier, but because the city and the county now have the holiday for Juneteenth, which is the week before, we are pushing, so that the students will have five complete days of learning. We are suggesting the 26th through the 30th. We want to offer the science institutes for the emerging freshmen, public safety institutes, the mixed media art institutes and leadership. The leadership institutes was a way, when we started Sturgeon City Institutes, to, to marry together the youth council and to provide opportunity, not just for learning, but instill a sense of place in students as well and give them a voice in our community. Although we may not be able to do the leadership institutes individually this year, our thought is, is that we wanted to bring that leadership experience to all students that participate. So what we're hoping to do is have a floating teacher that would go into each of the different, into science, into public safety and into the art groups and, and have a leadership experience for each of them. We felt like we could reach more students that way. We plan on having three locations where the students will be. And we're hoping for about how many, Pat, about 50 to 70 is what we hope our enrollment would be. With this plan, locate, the three locations would be at Sturgeon City. They have reserved a ample space for us as well as the Center for Public Safety, for the Public Safety Institutes, and then the Arts Council, as I mentioned earlier. And I'll hand it back over to Pat.
So for the future, what does it look like this, this year in taking the institutes back underneath the umbrella of the city? We will be offering three and incorporating leadership into those three. But next year, we would like to grow again. We would like to go back to offering some of the original seven institutes. And that can be based off teachers as well as students' needs, whether it's the advanced marine biology and engineering. But we definitely want to bring back in leadership because I believe that's key for some of the students in our area. We also want to extend it from one week to two because again, in the past, that's how long the institutes ran, was two weeks. And we, we also want to be open and objective to the needs of our community and our other staff. If they have ideas of an institute where it would benefit to bring students in to learn what the city is doing, we're, we're open to expanding as well. But the main goal and the focus is, Mayor and Council, a long time ago, made the moral decision to clean up the New River. It starts an end in one county, in our county. It was our responsibility. And we all stepped up, took that responsibility and reopened that river which was closed. Not all other municipalities can say that. That is a great success story. And from that, Sturgeon City was born. We want to make sure that we capture that and tell it over and over so that history doesn't repeat itself. But more importantly, for other municipalities to see what we're doing and follow suit. Let's, let's do a better job with our environment. Let's do a better job with our students. We also want to continue our partnership with Sturgeon City and grow. And any other programs, I'd love for our student council to grow as well. They are very important to us. And then to, to build whatever we need to allow students to feel empowered and part of this community where they will have a voice for decades to come. On behalf of Lisa and I, thank you for allowing us to present. This is something very near and dear to our hearts and we appreciate your time. And if you have any questions.
I got a question for you. Now, the Sturgeon City Board and Dr. Herring, they're all on board with this.
Yes, sir.
I mean, they brought it to us. So they have challenges about how they can offer their programs?
Well, I think, I think the whole, the Sturgeon City concept is, is something that is enduring in our community as far as, you know, what we've been able to accomplish, what, what this initiative has accomplished. Like you say, cleaning this river up. You know, normally, years, years passed, you wouldn't want to eat a fish to come out of there, if there was a fish in there, of course. But now it's, it's, it's a sportsman's mecca just about, you know, to, in there, in that river. It's a beautiful river. A lot of, a lot of it's been, you, Pat.
It, it was a group effort. If Mayor and Council hadn't, had made that decision, we wouldn't be here.
Ms. Donovan, Ms. Donovan Potts, you indicated the initiative started in 1999. And when was this river officially declared clean? Do you remember?
It was reopened to all recreation and commercial uses in 2001.
Wow, okay.
And it has remained open since then.
So my next question, you know how Swansboro has the mullet festival? Have you guys ever thought about having the Sturgeon Fish Festival just to bring light, community, heads on beds to the community to celebrate the New River's vitality?
That is an excellent question. I'm so glad you asked.
And yes, send me the check. You can do it.
Slidder than 20. So we actually applied for a marine fisheries grant this past year. And in that marine fisheries grant, that is exactly what we're trying to do, is to bring an annual fishing tournament to the New River focused on the Oyster Highway. And what we would do is pay for our local guides, Jacksonville's local guides, to come in and teach newbies, especially new Marines, how to fish, what bait to use, what, what species are in, what season, where to go. You know, what size can you catch versus what you've got to put back? They would teach a two-day class on a Friday and Saturday in February because most of the guides are not running in February. And so we could actually lure them away to teach this class. And then the second part of that grant is to actually hire 30 of those fishing guides from Onslow County to come in and take those participants out on the New River to the Oyster Highway and literally teach them how to fish, how to throw a cast net, how to catch and release. And again, spend all day on the water teaching students, their students how to fish. And we, what we want this to do is to be an annual fishing tournament to show how far the New River has come. to show how far the New River has come in just 23 years.
And I would just add to that, Pat, to say that the last few years, the Sports Commission has had a triathlon, which a part of that is swimming in the river. The river is clean enough for us to do that.
Ask you a question. Why the change in thing? I know they've said something about an insurance issue. Why the change in?
You know, you're telling a great story, but we don't know what's driving this.
So Sturgeon City came back, and they have concerns with being able to offer programs through our programming to have the same type of activities in water and busing people. That's their challenge of insurance, that they can't secure insurance. I think their number for us was maybe $18,000 a year. They would have to pay an additional insurance to still operate the programs or for us to operate the programs under their umbrella, which is how we've been providing the institute classes now. So they'll still maintain their programs that they do, but they won't have anything where they're going offsite. They will not be in the water. Theirs will be more fundamental inside of the facility. And so when we met with them, we asked the question, do you want us to continue? It was a, it was a complete yes. We want you to be able to continue. If the city would take over the programs that you've been doing, all the registration, all the activities, the busing, the responsibility, we want to see it continue. And so sitting in that meeting, it was the thought of, well, can we pull this together and handle it ourselves? Lisa and Pat pulled together a team of everyone and said, can we do this to maintain it? So then, once we decided we could, and that was a team of 10, 11, 12 people again, when we decided we could, then we needed to differentiate the Sturgeon City programs from our programs because we can't be under their umbrella at all. So that's when the naming came up, that we capitalize off of the New River Institute and the Sturgeon Institute so that there's two separate programs and we maintain it. So we have to differentiate based on their request to us.
From a branding perspective, you have to, because it's two different entities?
Well, we can't be under their umbrella. And so that was their, that was their request. And so we've decided if we're going to keep this brand, then let's move it forward with our New River Institute brand.
See, with two different registering agencies, in other words, the city's going to register the attendees for the ones, the programs that we manage. And Sturgeon City will, like they do now, register for the people that participate in the programs they manage. So the idea was, you know, make it clear to people, you know, where they register for which program, you know, in addition to not muddying it up for Sturgeon City. In other words, their insurance company saw some of the pictures of programs that, you know, that they've been involved in. They were really our programs, you know? And they basically say, well, you know, we don't want to insure you for this or if you, you know, for that's activities, it's more expensive. So all the activities that were, you know, their insurance company pushed back on were primarily our program activities. So, you know, we've got the ability to basically, the leak, and we'll cover for that. We'll obviously, you know, have safe programs and that kind of stuff. But I mean, that's.
Certainly a change in vision of Sturgeon City, what we envisioned, isn't it? Well, a big change.
Yes, well, it is.
It makes you wonder what's the future of Sturgeon City. If they're not offering this type of program, I mean, you know, they're steady. We set them up. We bought, we built them a building.
We paid about $4 million?
Yeah. Well, and they, of course, paid one quarter of it, or they're paying one quarter of it. But the other thing, though, too, is they've got programs that, you know, they, their science programs that they've got. And their focus is on what they see, their future. And when you think about the river, and Pat talks about the Oyster Highway and what we've continued to evolve, you know, that's really part of cleaning up the New River. And so some of the things we're talking about with our science is really talking about what the city did, you know, cleaning up the New River. But the other more important thing is we're trying to do things quality of life-wise for the community. We want to make sure that we have these opportunities for our youth. And if Sturgeon City doesn't feel like they can run those programs and we can, then that's where we're stepping in, you know?
I think it's a great idea. I just, I'm just, I'm surprised. You know, here's a board that, you know, it seems to me like their focus now is how can we? They're a venue operator. How much can we fill this building that we've got, that the city built for us? Other than that, I'm not sure, you know, if we're taking this back over, which I think is a great idea now, don't get me wrong. But I just, just, just a little concerning about the future of what Sturgeon City's going to be.
Well, and.
And that's what they said. They're at that place now to figure out what their, what their future's going to be, how they're going to define it, and they're going to move it forward.
And, you know, of course, they've offered the building for the use for, you know, programs. So, you know, we are part, we are cooperating, you know, and we're, you know, supporting each other. So it's not that they want to be away from us, you know? It's just that, again, the practical things of what's going on in the world today when it comes to running activities and that kind of thing. And who, you know, which agency makes more sense to run some of these activities?
I think it'll continue our partnerships for our youth because what we talk about, what Chief Yonero tells us a lot of times is we're either going to invest in our community young or we're going to support them at a later date in a different facility. And so if we can strengthen the partnership with Sturgeon City, with the YMCA, with the Boys and Girls Club, and with our institute, we're going to have more activities through the summer. And then, as Lisa said, we're going to spin those kids over to Tracy and to Pam to grow our youth council so that we keep them active. And that's our end game, is to keep people away from going down one path and keep them active here. Sturgeon City's going to have, I think they said they'll have 100 people in their program during the summer. And that's 100 people. We'll have 70 people. Recreation's going to have hundreds of people. So between multiple avenues, hopefully, we'll be able to reach different groups. Tracy's working with the Boys and Girls Club. They're starting a new outreach over at Sandy Run, and they're going to have a new summer program there, which is crazy exciting. YMCA's trying to expand some programs, too. So I think we're going to be successful in how we reach our kids, but we're going to have to keep pushing program ideas.
I like that. You're actually expanding your programs. I do love that. And I was looking at arts, and I'm kind of have a leaning towards the writing part. So I would hope those kids would start getting involved with writing. I have to talk to Noah about that so they could help write the story of Sturgeon City. But going back to that is that, you know, and I understand there has to be changes in name. But I was looking at the story of Sturgeon City and how rich that story is. Yeah, the brand itself. So I was, you know, you're talking about 23 years of that brand and now changing it. And my concern is that, because of where it originally started and taking that name away, you know, maybe we could do a hybrid name of some kind. New River Institute at Sturgeon City. I don't know. But I would hate for that name to be taken away from that and we totally lose that story over time because that's what happens.
Let me reject some. That's a good point. Sturgeon City's not going away. It's not going away. I mean, this is, we're going to continue doing what we've been doing all along, the city's been doing all along, and just making that New River Institute. You still got Sturgeon City. It's not going anywhere.
I think your idea is a great idea. We have two new rivers in North Carolina. And I don't think we want to be confused with one of the mountains. And that's much more well-known than our New River. But I like New River Institutes and Sturgeon City. I think it gives us a nice tie.
You can do that.
That's satisfactory.
Because that's part of our story, and that's the big element. You're right on that one.
It is our story. It's the city's story.
And no one else can tell this story like we can tell this story. And it's a huge success story. So it'll be, it'll be something that you continuously see, but we can incorporate.
I bet you that other New River can't even compare with our New River.
I didn't know it exists, Mayor. I think he made it up.
I bet you that only Happy Institute.
I usually do make things up.
They can spell Institute, Mayor.
Brian, I think your idea is right on, by the hybrid. I think I can.
Good to have one.
River and a student Sturgeon.
Hey, and it's early in 2032. You may have two this year.
And I think that's sufficient to separate.
Yes, sir. I think it's great.
Right, Joe?
Yes, I would make that up.
You know, if they're not able to offer that further because of insurance purposes, we certainly, we need to do it, and y'all have done it. So great, great initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pat and Lisa. Thank you very much.
Your presentation. Keep doing the great work, Mayor. All right, we have a one city moment there.
We do have, Mayor, if I can get on over here. So we were able to bring back in January. Bless these kids' hearts for having to wear that Cowboys memorabilia there. But other than that, they were very happy.
America's team.
This is snow days in January. You'll see in the background, there is no snow anywhere else, just here. And this just goes through our Parks and Recreation Teams for investing in the opportunity to allow our kids to have a lot of fun in the community. You know, the challenge now is you create something fun, then you create a waiting line. And so watch out, they're going to want to grow this to be bigger and better because there's a lot of kids that have a lot of fun doing it. This guy on the left doesn't look like the same size as the young lady on the right, but he looks happy. So we know it's a lot of fun throughout the organization. And we were excited. So a lot of fun to be in the park and see this. A good family event in the evening, really the epitome of what we had. Then we were able to, Chief Yonero pulled together our prayer vigil. You'll notice this out in front. There's a couple of people that we recognize. This was last Wednesday, I believe, at the Police Department. But what it provided us was another opportunity to come together as a community and to appreciate who we are and how we are as a community. And I think, I think the knowledge and the initiative by Chief Yonero to give us this opportunity again is top-notch and first-class. And then to get the mayor to speak at the microphone was even better. So for Chief and his twin, good job. I know. You thought there was only one? No, there's two. We just haven't told you yet. But that really shows what we do. And you see some of our pastors, you know, people that are there to allow us that opportunity to have a good, strong faith in community here in Jacksonville is such a blessing. And as always, members of our police force were there, not just because anyone's told to be there. When the chief told, had his staff meeting on Tuesday, he said, everyone's encouraged to attend because that's who we are and there's unity within our community. This right here is an awesome story, Mayor. An anonymous donor bought 10, bought these passes. These are 10 passes for Jacksonville Transit buses through and gave them to the Salvation Army so they could give them out to people in the community. It seems simple, but it is a huge deal because there are people in our community that use our transit system to get around. And to have their punch cards that they're given to from anonymous sources is incredible. And I just tell you, it's a blessing. I was excited that it came through, and I'm excited that people know that the Salvation Army is here and is a means to provide a level of support in the community. That's the value add. They could have bought them, give them to us, and just ask us to hand them out, but they did something better. They went to where the need was and they located the right source to make it happen. This is a jazz festival that we had here in the community, which if we could have had them here live tonight, it would have been great to have some background music. But having another Jazz in the City event, it goes back to that quality of life that Mr. Jackson mentioned earlier. So you're giving us an opportunity to celebrate and appreciate, for one, music, but the second, just who we are in the community. So it's super exciting, and the talent level was very good from what I've listened to. So very exciting to have events in the community. As we continue to grow, we're going to have more events and more opportunity for activity, whether it's jazz, unified prayer, playing in fake snow, whatever it is. We want to pull our people together and give them the chance to enjoy the time together and to appreciate the fellowship that we have. So a lot going on in our community, Mayor. If you ever, if you have time and you check in the schedule, please let us know because people are happy to be present and accounted for and to enjoy the time together. And you could have struck a pose right here and got a good picture. So I think we had a great event and a great time by everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, with that, it entertained a motion to go into closed session. We'll discuss, we're going to discuss personnel dive and also 35 privileges.